Probably a few other roofs over classrooms that need replaced for the semester. That's me. I'll do whatever you tell me.
And what school are we talking about now?
I'm talking about Midway, Ranger. There's some roofs that are in worse shape than the general.
How they are.
In my opinion.
Okay.
Because if we've got black walls and black flooring, that's probably mold underneath those bleachers. That's got to come out there.
If it's black, we'll, we'll cut it out of there.
It'll just come back if we don't fix the problem.
Woods, wood is not a material that normally causes a lot of mold, health issues. Normally it's sheet rock, ceiling tiles, insulation. Things porous more so than wood. I'm saying it can happen, but it's not as likely with wood.
And Midway and Ranger, those roofs aren't as large as these others are.
They're not.
Okay. And you said it would be about eighty thousand dollars to replace those, what?
At the gym.
Half of that maybe or something with these Rangers.
Yeah, there's two sections at Midway that are needy. There's one section right now, it's an immediate Ranger, really two.
You don't have to replace them or just patch it around?
No, I'm talking about replacing.
Okay.
There's several sections that at Duval that are.
So how much money you got?
Well, that's the problem. That's the whole problem. If I had plenty of money, I'd probably stay another year or more. Because the problem is that there's just not enough money.
Money's leaving and you're going with it.
That's right. Money's drying up, so I'm going too. There's, there's lots of issues out there. Well, we got two sewer planes that could go any day. At Midway and at Duval.
What's the sewer plant cost?
Well, the estimate I got from Richmore was around a hundred thousand. Environment protections telling me they think we can do better than that.
They're about, no.
Maximum.
Okay. Well, we'll talk on here, but maybe what Mr. Mickip, you need to do is make the thing and try to prioritize all of it. You know, we heard all these different issues here.
Sorry about the bad news. I've tried to be positive.
I was sitting here wondering if you had any good news tonight. You usually have some good news.
He's not done yet.
I'll try to think of something.
That's what we do. On these, Dana, is these guys should come in and say, hey, we got a grant for all kinds of money to do this.
Yeah, I'm trying to find twenty thousand dollars for one, uh, blinds for these new windows that we just purchased. I think I'm going back to the drawing board. I might have to do some more shopping because that's the price I've got so far. They're nice vertical blinds. The ones that we've been putting over at Lincoln County High School, they turn out great, but I look, I think I'm gonna have to look at another.
Just for one school?
That's for Ranger and, and Hamlin. I've got a twenty thousand dollar.
Why don't you work with Dana and try to look at just various things from others. Try to prioritize those and then come back later and what you all, how you prioritizing. And then we'll kind of go from there, guys.
But even prior to the prioritization that you are going to do, you are going to do something with the, by the location of the water issue.
Yes. Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
I think that should be at the top of the list.
Yes.
And, and it's obvious that the moisture's coming from the bottom of the wood. You can check the top of the wood and it's maybe nine percent. You go down to the, to the bottom of the board, the actual gym board. And it some, it went up to twenty-nine percent down valley and nineteen percent.
That's why I think we needed to deal with that and correct that. It makes sense that, well, nothing else we do that. But you would work with him on that. Now, what else you got, Dana?
I'm not gonna talk, I'm not even gonna talk about it. I just think I've gave you enough. Oh, if Mr. Roach was here, he'd be really upset by shooting with a rubber band.
We'll capture that.
He about to kill me on staff meeting one time for killing a wall.
We'll capture it and have a set of it.
Yeah. All right.
See, Bill, have anything for Mr. Dana before he departs here on anything else?
Unless you have something good to say.
I'm sorry. Next time I come, I'll think of something.
Thank you. All right. Does she have anything else about the mangas there?
We got planned and we'll sit down and take a look at it.
Okay. Share with us later. Okay. Uh, next in is Bill Limble who's gonna talk about student drug test. Bill, I don't know whether you're looking at that animal or insect or your screen. He's one, he probably came with me. Talking further. This is smart. They run. Well, thanks, Bill. Did they care that Kevin, that's a man, Bill, that didn't do it? Gosh, I don't know.
I don't think my parents were around when I built the place.
Well, I used to be a tourist.
All you're saying is destroy it from the side.
Well, the side, they didn't use the materials.
They didn't use building. They build a new gym.
Right.
That sounds right to me.
You weren't around any of the sidewalks.
All right, Bill. What you got for everybody?
Well, uh, we've been talking a little bit about whether we ought to have a random drug testing policy for, uh, certain students in our, uh, school system. We're the only, uh, all of our counties in the RISA has this, uh, random drug testing policy except for Wayne and us. It's the only two that don't have it in our RISA. Okay?
Four counties do and two don't.
Right. Okay. But what's, why do we need this? If you've been reading the papers last year, last couple of years, West Virginia has the highest drug overdose rate, more than twice the national average. In West Virginia, the drug overdoses. It's also affecting our workforce. You know, we know a lot of people that can't get jobs because they're on drugs. And you, you go with, uh, you go to job fairs, uh, like Toyota and some of those, and that's the number one reason they're not hiring people is drugs. And number two is they won't show up to work after they hire them for not on drugs. So that's the number one reason. Nearly twenty-nine hundred overdoses in five years in West Virginia. More than nine hundred overdoses in Cavill County last year, resulting in seventy deaths. That was greater than two thousand twelve, fourteen combined. Another issue we have is the male absentee syndrome. Babies are the babies that are born that are hooked on drugs and they have to go to the hospital. They have Lily's Place and different places down there that they, that they go to. In two thousand twelve, seventy-five out of a thousand born at Cavill Honeycomb had, uh, were NAS births. The national average at that time was five in a thousand. Last year, uh, for fourteen, they won't get the, they don't have the fifteen data yet. It was a hundred and thirty-nine out of a thousand and the national average was seven out of a thousand. So you know we have a drug problem in this area. In the last three years, we've had a hundred and forty overdoses in Lincoln County. Now, they couldn't give me how many of those resulted in deaths, but a hundred and forty overdoses. These are going, it's costing the school system. You know, if we pay, uh, if we come in, uh, each year, we gotta have another aid. We gotta have another aid because we have students that, uh, children that are addicted to drugs. You know, and, and we're not equipped to handle that. You know, so we've got to do some changes, try to get, correct people to that behavior. Family experiences. I'm sure there are everyone in here can name someone in their family or a close friend that's affected by drugs and it's destroyed their life, but it not only destroyed their life, it destroys their family's life, for sure. As I say, all counties except for Wayne are doing the random drug testing. And can we legally drug test students? In two thousand two, the Supreme Court granted that permission that you can test, uh, random, uh, drug test students. Also, a court, uh, provided that you could test, uh, drug, to random drug test students that drive to school because that is a privilege. That goes beyond, it's a higher standard, held at a higher standard than, uh, than just coming to school. What we're looking at with, with your guys' commission, we just want to throw this out there tonight. If we want to go forward, then we'll start working on a policy and bring that back. We want to test, uh, students involved in extracurricular activities, students that drive and park on school property, and any parent that wants their child to opt in, if they're not in one of those categories, can opt in to, to the drug test. Why do we want to do this? One, we want to educate our students about the, the serious harms that drugs can do them. Two, we want to make sure that our athletes are not doing illegal performance enhancing drugs. Three, we want to make sure students are safe driving. But the number one reason, we like all those, but the one reason I really like and I'm talking to a lot of the other counties is number four. It gives those kids an app. If they're at a party on Friday night and somebody says, hey, hey, don't you just try this? No, no, I, they may drug test money. I don't get to drive to school. I may be kicked out of the van. I may be kicked off. It gives them a, uh, you know, peer pressure has a lot more. Peers could get kids to do more than we can give them to do. You know, so if they have another way out, it'll be a way for them to get out of it. Okay? When can a student be tested? They can be randomly selected, equal probability of the selection. Or if there's reasonable suspicion, if they're at school and think they're on drugs and so forth, which we would already do anyway. We'd be tested for alcohol, marijuana, performance enhancing drugs, and any other illegal drugs. How would this happen? There would be, it'd be a urine drug screening. Specimens would be collected in private restrooms at each school. Students will have privacy. An employee of the drug testing company and an employee of the school would be present outside the classroom, outside the bathroom when those kids are in there. And, and, uh, what we would do, probably it would be somebody in the central office, most likely me, that would get the list of students that would be tested and what day they're coming. And then what we'd like to do is what some of the other counties do. They hire a substitute, uh, administrator to come in that day and they report to the school and have that list and they just get those kids and go down the hallway and that way it don't interrupt any of the other administrators or the school process or anything. So that's what we're looking at. Confidentiality. Positive tests for active students, they'll pay who that will be for the central office, the principal, head coach, the parent, and the custodial, where the custodial garden is being notified. For driving students will be the student, principal, and the parent. Positive tests for opt-in participants will just be the student and the parent being identified. Okay. What, what I also like about it, I'll get put in there, but I'll go ahead and say it now, is this company that some of the counties use, when this drug test comes back, they contact the parent first before they contact the school. And they want the parent to say, they'll say, now, is your child on any medication that would have caused you to test positive? And if they provide a prescription to that company that shows that that's what caused that student to test positive, then the school never knows that that student tested positive. Okay, which I like that part of it. Okay, these are some of the consequences. The first offense, uh, in, in order, the, the, we're not there to hammer people. We're there to try to help them. Okay? The first offense would be that they would enter drug counseling. If they would provide that they entered for drug counseling, then, uh, then that would be it. Okay? Unless they test again. Second offense, uh, would be, uh, for an athlete would be, uh, fourteen day calendar days and completion of the, uh, of the, uh, drug test, suspended fourteen days. The student self-referrals, uh, there's no consequences, but that's still counted as the, as a first time offense that they self-refer.
What if someone self-refers three or four times every time you test them? How's that work?
If someone did what now?
Let's say you test someone, they know they're positive, they self-refer, they go through the approved program, then they're under the first offense punishment phase, which means they get tested three more times within the next calendar year. How many times can they self-refer? Because I could see a habitual drug user, every time they get tested, they self-refer.
That would be something we would have to discuss and, and decide.
These aren't necessarily students for an activity though, right?
No, these are people volunteering for the program.
Right. Well, it should be both. It could be all three. It could be someone that's a, uh, an athlete become self-referral. If they, they're asking.
Automatically in the pool.
They are, but they're not, they may not be randomly selected. They could.
Don't self-refer. But I mean, if I'm an athlete and I'm, I get a second offense, or, you know, get that more than once, then I'm gonna get an offense two there. Correct?
Not if you self-refer. Why, why not? Well, self-referral means you've asked for help.
Well, but, I mean, it could be written in such a way that, uh, a person, if they were, if they had a second, they could fall into the second.
Self-referral first time, they fall into one, and then we could write a policy, self-referral, the second time would be second.
Right. But I mean.
Yeah, and that's all I'm pointing now.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's what we want to do and, and we want to get the feedback from everyone.
But now, there's a person that's not an athlete and they don't drive or anything else and they, their parents have just gotten them into the program. I mean, they don't really have to be there, so that's the first, the initial, uh, one there of having drug counseling. There's, at this point, nothing else that we would do.
Well, if it, if it is a self-referral, uh.
Well, we can't take away the privilege of playing in the sport or the band or anything else, so.
No, on, on the next page, if you turn to the next page of your drug policy, it tells you the consequences for opt-in participants and so notified.
Driving students, the first offense, uh, suspended until the parent or guardian submits proof that the student has received drug counseling. Three additional screenings will occur the next calendar year. Okay? Second offense, they would lose their driving privileges for ninety days. Be tested five additional time over the calendar year. Opt-in students, any offense, the parent will be notified. Refusal to submit to a drug use test ineligible for the school year.
Do you have an athlete that refuses? They would be eligible.
Same thing for driving student then? If they, that, their privileges will be revoked.
Students will not be disciplined under the student conduct unless they have those drugs at school or intoxicated at school or whatever. Uh, reports, negatives, twenty-four, forty-eight hours, positives, forty-eight to seventy-two hours would be turnaround time. This is what I'm talking about. The medical review officer of the company that we would contract with a lot of these towns are. They look at the results, uh, they review medications for kids on, they talk with the parents and they report the results. But like I said, if it's, uh, if, if someone tests positive, they're gonna contact the parents and say, are there some medication that's causing this child to turn, uh, test positive? And if that happens, then the school never knows about it. Okay? Uh, procedure, uh, each student will have to take the quiz. There'll be a, it'll actually be this PowerPoint. Uh, they'll take, they'll do this PowerPoint, then they'll take a little quiz, ask them what's, what, how many times can you do this? Or how many days are you suspended from driving on your second offense? And, and they'll have to take a quiz. Of course, the big thing that we have to make sure of is everyone has a consent form signed by a parent that they think that they will participate.
What if they don't?
Then they wouldn't participate in, in the athletics or drive to school. Okay. Uh, consent form is turned in when you apply for parking pass or when you show up for practice. Name goes into, name of pool, the drug testing program begins with testing. Okay, what would the cost be? Estimated would be thirty-four dollars per test. We look, test about fifteen students per month. Fifteen students times thirty-four dollars times ten months would be fifty-one hundred dollars. And if we hire a subadministrator each of those days, if we pay them a hundred and fifty dollars, uh, then it'd be fifteen hundred. Total cost would be, uh, six thousand, six hundred dollars. Now, we could adjust that. We could test more students. We could test less students.
But this testing protocol just includes the number of what I would call fresh tests you're going to do, not follow-up testing for people that have failed and are required to do mandatory tests.
Yeah. It would, it may run into a little more if we get several people. Or we could, or we could know that we're gonna test five this time. We could randomly test ten if we want to keep that number at fifteen.
Now, are you, is it, are we talking just high school students?
We're talking about middle school. Now, Cavill County does their middle school athletes. And, you know, we could go there, but we thought if we could just start at high school and then if we see we need to move down, we could move down. But I guess what we're asking for is, do you want us to pursue with, uh, developing a policy and come back with it?
But you, you said something about midway through the presentation. I'm, I'm not sure if you said what I thought you said or not. You said that if, that's on page five of your PowerPoint if you want, you don't really need to look back to it, but you said that if you saw signs that led to reasonable suspicion of intoxication or, or drug use, you would test anyway. Now, is that under this policy or do you have that right now? If you see a student, if, if an administrator sees a student at Lincoln County High School that appears to be under the influence of drugs or alcohol, do we have?
I don't think we have that. We don't have a policy. We don't have that right. No, we do not.
But for those students that were under this drug policy you proposed, if an administrator, a coach, a parent, administrator saw signs of suspicious behavior, then you could not randomly, but pick that person out and test, and test them based on their behavior. And that's because they consent to it by playing athletics or driving?
Or opting in.
You know, personally, I think that for several years later than talking about this, it should have been done when the school was open. If we can save one kid at work. And Bill, you talked about Cavill checking middle school athletes. We can check, you know, we can start doing this. We can see how many freshmen we're getting with drugs. Then we'll know that we've probably got them down. But, uh, this drug problem is a serious problem and we've got to do what we think, what we can to help these kids. I've been on this for several years and I appreciate Bill and Mr. Mickip listening to this.
Well, Mr. Mickip, let me ask you a question. You've been in this whole system actively for how many straight years in one role or another?
Forty-nine.
Okay. Looking at the population of students we're gonna capture with this, are we targeting the right people? Or is the answer that we can't target the people we need to target with the drug test?
That's the answer.
So when we're doing this, I mean, I'm going back to my high school days and, yeah, some of the athletes drank beer on the weekends, maybe something else. But for the most part, your athletes and your kids that had driving privileges were not the ones that were causing problems. But that was a lot of years ago. But I suspect it's the same today. So, I mean, I, I don't think it's money that's not well spent, but I, I don't think it's gonna address the real problem.
Yeah, but we can't address the real problem. Well, that's a problem.
Don't it? That's why I asked Bill if we had the right to test people that appear to be under the influence.
Unless they opt in. I have a child and, and I have two great girls, but I would have opted in.
But you as a parent are also watching your kids twenty-four seven.
Right.
That's not where the problem lies. We all know that.
But there's some that watch the parent, watch the children, that.
And, and I know it's, it's all a matter of legalities that, that you can't randomly test without permission or without a higher level of scrutiny. Just hang on.
Carol, did you have something?
Yeah, the students that you test, you said he will have a list. Will anybody else have that list other than this one person?
Well, to keep it confidential and make sure no one's warned ahead of time.
Right.
I think it would just be a central office administrator and, and would just say, you know, we're drug, we'll let the principal know we're drug testing Mark. We don't, don't say who and that administrator shows up, we get in the list and those kids are called out.
Will they know ahead of time that there's gonna be drug testing?
We could schedule, well, we don't want to schedule.
Next Monday there's gonna be drug testing. It may or may not be chosen.
No, we're not, no, we're not gonna communicate with the drug testing.
Would each round of the testing be statistically random? I mean, just, let, let's say you're in the first round of ten that were tested. Does the next round of testing include those ten people again with a pure random draw? Or do you improve your odds if you clean the first time?
I would, I'm not sure how that would, that would, I can find that out.
I mean, it says equal probability of selection on page five.
But if you're picking, you, you may get randomly picked ten times, which is.
Yeah, you, you, yeah, otherwise, if you get a kid that, you know, gets the luck of the draw and goes clean the first time, the next nine months, they're on everything conceivable. They're not, they're not gonna be tested.
That'd be something we can talk to that company about.
Was this similar to the, the bus driver testing?
Uh, the same company that does our bus driving testing is one I've been talking to.
Because I think with them, aren't they subject to being tested more than once?
Yes.
Like what Carol was talking about. Let me ask, Bill, you said the drugs we're testing will be alcohol, marijuana, performance enhancing drugs, et cetera, et cetera.
Other illegal drugs.
So like cocaine, heroin, meth and all that kind of stuff? You know, I mean, and the opiates, I guess that's probably the most popular, aren't they?
I think so.
What we hear about all the time. If those would be in the et ceteras?
Yes.
Okay.
It would probably be whatever panel we want them to test.
Well, I'm just thinking of the ones we hear about, you know, and not anything, that's what we hear about all the time, you know, various deals and heroin and all that.
And, and, you know, we, we talked about our children and, uh, there's a presentation recently and they talked about, uh, normally it would take twenty-two days for these babies to get off the drugs, to get out of hospital. But now they're taking these other drugs that has caused these babies to be there, you know, extended, extended period of time. Okay, that affects all the other drugs.
And then even then, when they get out, have they been affected for life, you know, and I think.
Here's something I'd like you to think about as well when you're thinking about designing this program. And it may be singling out a group of students because I know that not all of your athletes have independent transportation. That's why we have an athletics bus. But could this testing take place on weekends as well? I mean, alcohol's still readily available. It's probably the drug of choice of most students. You drink on Friday night, it's out of your system on Monday. People know that. Most of your parties are going to be, if tradition still holds true, on Friday and Saturday nights. So, I mean, if we're going to do this, it needs to have teeth. It needs to actually be designed to catch even good students that are doing things they shouldn't be doing. And to do that, you're gonna need to test on weekends. That's my thought. Won't anybody else think so of it? And if, if we're giving people that drive the privilege of driving to school five days a week, they shouldn't complain they can't be there on weekends. And I'll bet you there's a large, oh, what's the Venn diagram? What's this? Come on, Jeff, the part in the middle where the Venn diagrams intersect, the common ground. I'll bet most of your athletes and the great majority of your athletes are also drivers.
Did you find out if, if other counties?
I will find that out. They play games on Saturdays.
Yeah. Well, we'll kind of consider that and see if other counties take that in consideration too.
Bill, as serious as this problem is, are there any agencies or, uh, division of government will help with the funding on this?
Maybe expanded beyond what you have there.
We can, uh, we can definitely look. I'll put some pillars out there and see if there's any out there. Seems to me like it needs to be expanded beyond this one. Possibly in so.
Okay. Anybody have anything else?
I, I, I'll just suggest one more thing. And this would probably hurt our opt-in rates, but if a student tests positive once, why should we pay for follow-up testing? Why shouldn't that student or that student, I mean, it's the student that wants privilege. Why shouldn't that student or the student's parents have responsibility for the mandatory follow-up testing? Why shouldn't that student or the student's parents have responsibility for the mandatory follow-up testing?
Are you saying just for the opt-in?